... fifteenth, we have a, an agenda before us, or, sorry, Councilor Smook was going to call in on the phone, we haven't been able to get a hold of her, so maybe throughout the meeting she might, but if not, that's why Councilor, or Deputy Mayor Smook is absent. We've called the meeting to order, we need a motion to approve the agenda, is the agenda, oh, Mr. Councilor Madichuk, providing a notice?
Sir?
Providing a notice?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. So this is, I'm assuming, a notice to rescind? Notice to rescind?
Yes.
Okay, so as for the general public and those watching, notice of, to rescind a specific resolution or bylaw has been provided by Councilor Madichuk, the process is that it's noted in the minutes, and the notice to rescind will be discussed at the next regular council meeting. We have an agenda before us, are there any changes to the agenda, or acceptance of the agenda as presented? I see no changes, so I need a motion to accept the agenda as presented. Councilor Madichuk, Councilor Ellis, all in favor? Kerry, thank you. Next up, we have general inquiries, and I would just remind everybody, we've got ten minutes for general inquiries, please state your name, ask your question, and be considerate of those who may want to ask other questions. Welcome.
Ms. Ellsworth?
Thank you.
First of all, I guess congratulations in order, Mr. Mayor, you recently retired from Valet. I've been trying to do that for many years, so hopefully I'll be as successful as well. My general inquiries, I'm sure I'm not alone in the room tonight, is, I'm gonna call it deplorable, because that's what it is. I was on the way home from, from work today during lunch hour and again in the evening, and I observed quite a number of vehicles slipping all over the roads, and, you know, we've ran out of the budget, there's no money left for snow removal, because I haven't seen a whole lot since the last snowfall, but the roads are very, very bad, and I'm gonna say unsafe. I think maybe I'm qualified to say that, and so I would like to ask the question, what, do we have a schedule for snow removal, what's happening with it?
Yes, we do have a schedule for snow removal. We have, as everyone's aware, experienced a lot of heavy snowfall and extreme cold weather. In one specific area, in the Riverside area, we, we experienced a major fire that iced up Riverside Drive from Thompson Drive all the way down to probably, I want to help me out with the street past Riverside School, Granite. And so our resources are working at max, we have two shifts, two shifts a day in regards to that. They'll be starting on Thompson Drive tomorrow, as advised by Mr. Kavursky this morning, in removing the, the snowbanks and the snow piles. As I've stated for the last couple of weeks, if there are, and there, we know that there are a lot of potentially hazardous snowbanks, especially in the school zones, we've asked people to be patient with us as we go through those, those removals. Again, drive to the conditions of the road, they aren't what they, they should be, through no fault of ours, of our own, we have our forces working to the max from that perspective, and we will continue to do that, but I would, again, put the onus back on the drivers and operators of vehicles to drive to the conditions of the road, especially in the school zones. I've noticed kids, with the snow piles being quite high, it's very attractive to be sliding on them and climbing on top, and so we want to make sure that kids aren't sliding into traffic, but, again, be aware of the driving condition. So we are doing our best, we ask the city residents for their patience, but we are working hard to try rectify the situation.
Okay. I'll make a statement, then I'll ask the question. Let me say, to say that I'm disappointed, as a taxpayer, and as the president of the steelworkers, who've dealt with Valet and former INCO for many, many years, to what happened with our GIL, we're talking about the second largest company in the world. They got billions, they haven't got millions. And what they've done, and the city have accepted, and all the, what was explained at the last council meeting, is certainly unacceptable to me. I've been known to actually bring that same issue to the bargaining table years ago, when they tried it. So if, if Valet can state that they're going through rough times, and not give anything in, especially in the third and the fourth year, at least not try to give something when they could be a profitable year, something wrong with that picture for me. So, I'm gonna retire in a few months, and I wonder if I was to come to the city and say, can I have a tax relief if I stay in Thompson? And in fact, I'd like to say, I only want to pay a thousand dollars a year for taxes, because I'm a retiree, I have no children, and the system, I wonder what that answer would be. Chances are, I would be paying the same taxes, if not more than I am today. So I'll answer the question for you, but I would tell you, it's unacceptable, and I will be bringing that up into another forum when I get an opportunity later this week.
I, I, I hope that you do in the position that you, you are, but understand, and you've been through many negotiations, and I applaud you for that, but understand that the fifty-six agreement has parameters within it. There's a Part A and a Part B, and Valet, who negotiated, previously INCO negotiated that agreement with the province of Manitoba, has the right to do what they've done. We don't accept that it's the right thing to do, but we understand it's a business decision on their point. We really don't have a whole lot of cards to play as the city of Thompson. We've asked, and I've met with Minister Pedersen in the last couple of weeks, to ask for assistance in mitigating the decision. We will continue to work forward, work with the, the province to assist us in mitigating that issue, through the access to the Community Mining Reserve Fund, which has been used in, in the past in other communities who've gone through similar downsizing, but no one to the same significance that the city of Thompson will experience. And so, from that perspective, we will continue to work hard for the taxpayers of Thompson to mitigate that, the impact of the decision of Valet, and we'll leave it at that. Thank you.
So, side note, here, Mayor, I, I spoke to Walkeenew on Thursday night, the opposition for, for, for the government, the leader of the opposition, and he's assured me, he's brought it to the Finance Minister, and they've assured him that it could, not necessarily just this piece, but other pieces brought into the budget process. I hope they do, but that doesn't justify what Valet has done to this community.
Other questions? Please come forward, state your name, and ask your question.
Just got a couple of questions here. When did we start the infrastructure on our water line, was it two thousand fifteen?
We started a infrastructure program after the installation of the water meters, I believe, the year after, so I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for that. Two thousand twelve.
Was some of that infrastructure, was that done under government grants? And donations from Valet?
Oh, let me clarify. The, the grant from Valet in the last five-year GIL contained a three million dollar, one-time payment for capital projects. This council and the previous council spread that three million dollars over the life of the agreement, so we access six hundred thousand dollars per year for capital projects, and I'd have to go to Mr. Sepatelli to talk about where that six hundred dollars was spent. Mr. Sepatelli?
Yeah, so, in regards to, sort of, the two parties, that, so the Valet money that was identified for capital was not used on the water main renewals. We have, as we do every year, tried to maximize our grants with the province of Manitoba, and we have been successful over a number of years of getting grants from the Water Services Board to assist us with, with our water main renewals. Two years ago, obviously, that we were successful in the, the Canadian, or, sorry, the Clean Water and Wastewater Fund, through the province and the federal government, which really elevated the amount of work that we did two years ago.
So, that was done under the government grant?
It's done in regards to the utility revenue that we receive, that we put forth capital plan. And? We augment that, the amount that's available through the utility, through other government grants.
For the water, the water line?
For the grants for.
Second time?
Two times, the mayor.
Welcome.
Page two of your downtown strategies. Can you tell me, the dam house is owned by the city or rental?
The dam house you refer to is, is ninety-five Cree Road, and I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli in regards to the, the city does not own, City Thompson does not own it, Mr. Sepatelli.
Repeat the question, ninety-five Cree Road? Ninety-five Cree Road is owned by the Thompson Housing Agency.
So who look after that building, like?
The Thompson Housing Agency owns the building?
You mean the Thompson Housing Agency look after the building for people to go in and?
Is the property owner? The, the organization that runs the programs is Canadian Mental Health Association.
So the person who look after these people? That go in, they, like, are they the counselor, or what are the qualifications they are doing, like?
The ninety-five Cree Road is owned by the Thompson Housing Agency. There are, there is programs provided within the, the housing to assist those in need. That assistance is provided by the Canadian Mental Health Association, situated in the city of Thompson, and they receive grants from the federal and provincial government, and they receive a small grant from the city of Thompson as well. Mr. Sepatelli?
So the Canadian Mental Health Association is the tenant of that building?
So they have qualified people to look? After these people, like, they said, to stop them from harm themselves, or something like that?
Yes.
So, are they counselor, I'd just like to know.
But it's the Canadian Mental Health Association, so that's their business? Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Welcome. Welcome.
Yes, I see here on the, on page five, the budget overview of the RCMP, and I see overtime for regular members is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. So how much did the CSOs overtime for the year was?
Jenny Krenz, our CFO, I'm not sure that she would have that information at her hand, but we can certainly get it to you. The RCMP overtime and the CS overtime are not related?
Yeah, I know.
Okay, so, if she has the number, if not, we can get it to you.
Okay. Okay, now, you said you're gonna have the CS? So six of them, right? Right? Where's that money coming from?
Previously, there was a two-year agreement with the province of Manitoba, that, that funded a fifty-fifty cost share that expired on May twenty-fifth of two thousand seventeen. This council, through the budget preparation for two thousand seventeen, agreed to continue the payments to cover those CSOs that were in position, which were six, until year-end of two thousand and seventeen. Subsequently, in the two thousand and eighteen budget, we have made provisions to, to cover the cost for six CSOs. In the subsequent time of those discussions, the province of Manitoba, the Department of Justice, and we are in the process of having the paperwork provided, but we've, it's been indicated to us that the province will provide a one-time payment of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars towards the CSO program moving forward, and that the legislation in place that provides the powers for the CSO will remain indefinitely, and so, from, moving forward, we will receive a hundred and twenty-five thousand in two thousand and eighteen, and that's, that's it for the CSOs from the provincial side. The city of Thompson, through our budget deliberations, will continue to fund six positions in two thousand and eighteen.
Okay. Now, so that means the taxpayers are gonna pay for the CSOs then? Yes, the, the nine hundred thousand.
Sorry? No, that's not the cost. I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli, the annual cost for six CSOs?
Annual cost for eight CSOs was approximately six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which was picked up, three hundred thousand by the province, city of Thompson funded the rest. With the province only putting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars into it, the city of Thompson budgets the, the same amount that they did in two thousand and seventeen, which will operate the program, and, and the cost of the program for six officers is likely in the four fifty to four seventy-five thousand dollar range.
So, and now, you're gonna lay off two RCMP, right? You're, you're cutting back on two RCMP?
Just clarification, in regards to the process and the contract that we, the city of Thompson has with Public Safety Canada and the RCMP, there's a process that, if you want to decrease the number of members, you have to provide two years' notice to, to Public Safety Canada. We've provided that notice, and that's all we've done. There's been no decision on to reduce the, the current force, which is thirty-eight officers. We have the option to do that, but there's been no decision. We have provided that notification, as per the contract, that we can reduce, but there's no decision to reduce at this time.
All right, okay, next thing there, what do the CSOs do?
We, we run two shifts, and basically, they're bylaw enforcement, focused in the downtown area with the social issues. I'm sure that you've seen them around.
Boy, I see them all the time, I don't see them around downtown, though.
Perception of yours, we're, we're quite aware of where they work and what the time that they put in. We, we meet, we have reports every, every month at the Public Safety Committee meeting, which are, are open to the public, if you want to come. The supervisor of the CSO program provides the up-to-date, month-by-month breakdown of what the actions of the CSOs are.
Well, I'd rather have RCMP than CSOs. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing as it's seven sixteen, we'll close question period at this time. We will now go to the adoption of minutes, and we have a resolution, Resolution two zero one eight zero one six, moved by Councilor Ellis, seconded by Councilor Foley. We resolved that the minutes of regular meeting of council held in Council Chamber, City Hall, Thompson, Manitoba, on Tuesday, January second, two thousand and eighteen, be adopted as circulated. Call for the question, all those in favor? Kerry Denasry, thank you. We are now going into the RCMP quarterly report. This is a new, a new process, and I would like to welcome Inspector Kevin Lewis to the council chambers, and just as a background, the committee that, that I work, that I chair for the AMM, Manitoba Justice Advisory Committee, have been trying to standardize the RCMP reports by detachment across Manitoba. And so, in that, the RCMP have worked closely with us, and, and this is a Manitoba-born initiative, in that the report that Inspector Lewis will provide to us is similar in format that all inspectors or staff sergeants would provide to their detachments in other municipalities, so that counselors, the general public, the RCMP will receive the basic, one-to-two-page report as basic information, and then each committee, each community can ask an individual inspector for additional information. But the basic information will be provided in the same format, so that when councils change, when inspectors and, and members of the RCMP change, and when the, the government officials change, the process doesn't. So this is the first reporting of this type of process, so at this time, I'd welcome Kevin Lewis, our inspector, to present that report.
Good evening. All right, so, again, this is a new format, so we're all getting used to it, again, somewhat similar to some of the other formats we use in the past, but this is gonna be the one we're going to report here on out. So Thompson detachment, as stated previously, is thirty-eight regular members, they're on the city side, and then we have ten on the provincial side. Our annual budget for the city side operating and maintenance is eight hundred and ten right now, a thousand, and we operate on a fiscal basis, so April first to March thirty-first is the timeline that we, we run to. So I'm gonna be reporting on the third quarter. So every April, we meet with our, with our partners here at the city of Thompson, and we discuss the priorities for the city, and, again, we identify certain areas that we want to put emphasis on as a policing agency in partnership with the city of Thompson. And the goals and objectives that we decided this year were serious organized crime, drug trafficking, and contribute to safer roads in terms of impaired driving and tickets, the downtown strategy in engaging some of our, our folks in the downtown corps, and some harm reduction initiatives, and some youth engagement activities. So, I'll go into each one of those, how we're doing so far in the third quarter, and reporting for those. So the, the first side of the initiatives for serious and organized crime, drug trafficking, we have an offender management program where we pay close attention to some of our offenders that are high-risk to the community, usually in terms of drug trafficking, or some of the more serious violent offenses. So twenty checks were done on offenders over this quarter. In regards to drug search warrants, which is Controlled Drugs and Substances Act, as you'll see CDSA there, there was nine drug warrants executed in this quarter, with a significant amount of cocaine actually seized during this quarter. Again, contributing to safer roads, we're looking at impaired driving charges, so far fifty-three impaired driving charges in this quarter, and, again, I'm anticipating that we're gonna see a rise in that in the next year with the impaired driving legislation that's gonna be coming out in relation to cannabis. So, you're gonna have edibles, you're gonna have marijuana you can smoke, that's gonna be apparently legal over the summertime. So that's gonna be a bit of a challenge for policing, and we're all trying to prepare for that time. And traffic enforcement, in terms of tickets issued, two hundred and forty-three tickets issued for this quarter. In terms of the downtown strategy, we, we do regular visits to the ninety-five Cree Road as an engagement, and trying to, trying to get to know the folks, we have a lot of new members that come into town, and we're somewhat of a training ground for our training academy, so we, we get a lot of new folks that, that haven't seen the social, I guess, dysfunction that we have in Thompson to some degree. So, they, they get their eyes open, and they get a visit down to ninety-five Cree Road in terms of what some of the folks are dealing with for some of the challenges and addictions. So, we are also working on some harm reduction initiatives in regards to Project Detox, where we, we deal with our high-risk downtown folks, and we get them into the court system, requesting a dryout period for them, and some type of counseling. So that project is, is undergoing right now, and we're trying to compile some results as to how that's gonna go long-term, and whether we're gonna continue. We're gonna see if we're getting our bang for our buck there, in terms of our cooperation with the courts and the crown in regards to that one. Rather than just picking them up, kicking them out, we want to get something a little bit more stable, longer term, so that we're not doing the same thing in five years with the same people. So, if we can get the courts involved, drive them out a little bit, and maybe some important post-counseling there, we're hoping to reduce the amount of times that we're dealing with these folks. And then our crime, crime reduction involving youth, we added a hundred and fifty-seven community relation events that our police community relations team has done over this quarter, and that's school visits, things out of the community, daycare talks, that type of thing. So during the, this quarter, or last quarter, we had five thousand six hundred and thirty-five calls for service. So far, this, this, the last three quarters, seventeen thousand one hundred and forty-eight calls for service, just in the city of Thompson. And you can see in the category here for this quarter, tickets, which are common defense notices, two hundred and forty-three, fifty-three impaired driving, nine CDSA drug warrants, twenty offender management curfew checks, a hundred and fifty-seven youth engagements, then twenty-two visits to the dam house, and seven hundred and twelve harm reduction actions. And of course, if we go to four point two, we quickly list off some of the partnerships and meetings that we attend. We have the Thompson, the hub, meetings regularly that we are involved with in, in the city of Thompson, as well as Project Northern Doorway, and obviously various other ones. All right, so, under Section Five, Resource Overview, like we said, Thompson detachment to the municipal side is thirty-eight members, and as any organization, we have human beings, so we have maternity, paternity, sick leave, and transfers in and out, which leave us with about thirty-one actual members in establishment. So, this city is not built for those thirty-one, if you're wondering that, it's, they're built for thirty-one, not thirty-eight, that's how it works. So, you don't get built for those seven. So we have five that are coming in, and six members that are going out, waiting to sell homes. So, again, that's two cadets coming in in February, actually, we just found out today, we have a, a third cadet coming in, one in March, and we have two members on maternity leave, two members on maternity leave, one member light duties, and, again, we have a mix of public service employees, which are federal government support staff, and we have municipal employees that provide support to our RCMP members, and, again, there's staffing processes in place for some of those folks. And down to number six for the budget. Again, I said that our budget was around eight hundred and ten thousand for the year, we're actually gonna be increasing it, it's no additional cost to the city, but it'd be looking at about just over a million dollars, just to account for the court commissioner costs, which are guard, guarding costs for the prisoners that are incarcerated on the city side of the fence, and that's just to create a little bit more of a balanced profile for when I look at the budget and see where we're at, in terms of what we're spending. And you can see, like was mentioned before, we have two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars so far this fiscal year for overtime for regular members, court commissioner costs are about a hundred and sixty thousand, prisoner expenses around eighty thousand, and we have a reservist that comes in the summertime that does downtown patrols, he, his wage is about seventeen thousand. And that is pretty much it, unless there's any questions.
Council, any questions or comments on the report? Council Valentino?
So, are you short-staffed in the municipal spot? You, you said you have one waiting for security clearance?
For the municipal employees?
Yeah.
So, yes, we are down, actually, I believe, two in the municipal side, because we're supposed to have nine, we have seven right now. The ones in security clearance, the other one hasn't been advertised yet.
And for process, this'll go to public safety and to finance, I would think, these quarterly reports now, will go like that? So this is gonna be January, February, March, so our next report will be realistically, like, end of April?
Right.
Okay. And you'll always have that, I like that, like, year-to-date from the year before, that'll continue to?
Right.
Okay, good, I think these are good, great, thank you.
Council Barr?
First of all, I want to thank you, and Kerry, that you do, you cover a lot of ground in a lot of areas. I notice in the current activity statistics, numbers are up for everything this year over last, both in the quarter and year-to-date, and a lot of people ask about the value of the CSOs, and yet, I know, even though your numbers are up, I've, I've heard you say before that the CSOs take away a lot of the work for your members to concentrate on the harder things. I was wondering if you would just give us a short explanation of that, because I'm doing a terrible job.
So, prior to the CSOs, I could have members sitting on a fire scene, so you look at anybody sitting on a fire scene, so say that fire everywhere in the interior, and so you have a member or two sitting on that at double time, because they're, they're on double time, because the, the members that are working on shift have to be working the road, taking the calls for service. So, if we can augment those members with CSOs, that's a significant savings in regards to having to, rather than paying somebody double time, now you're paying somebody at a lower wage to fill that gap. In addition, whenever we have a mental health crisis, so we have about seven hundred and thirty calls for service in regards to mental health so far this year, which is significant numbers, those are big numbers compared to across the province. And what's driving, I don't know, addictions is one of the biggest ones, of course, but that is one of the biggest consumers of time for RCMP members across the province, especially here in Thompson, when you can imagine, like, we're not gonna escort all seven hundred and thirty-one of those, those mental health patients to the hospital, but even half, you know, sixty percent we end up taking to the hospital, and that means sitting at the hospital for four hours, five hours, eight hours. Some cases, the new, well, this, I don't know if it's a new protocol, but the next bed rule that the, the hospitals have in Manitoba, we could be driving to Selkirk, we could be driving to Brandon, we could be driving to the Paw with a mental health patient, because there's nobody, there's no bed available in Thompson. So, now you're tacking on another sixteen hours of double time for two members to take a mental health patient somewhere, or even that four hours in Thompson, so they're sitting at the hospital for four hours, two members, when we could be having CSOs do that work. In regards to the downtown corps, so, when I first got here in two thousand and fourteen, we spent a lot of time in the downtown corps, and less time spent dealing with persons' crimes, drug offenses, the stuff that matters to the taxpaying folks, so they're calling the police. And now we don't spend half as much time in the downtown corps, because we're not called for service anymore, to the same degree, but we still pick up the slack where, when they're busy, or when they're off to shift, but for the most part, between those core hours of ten in the morning till, I don't know, nine o'clock at night, the CSOs are dealing with that, and it's taken a lot of work off our plate, like, it is looking at about forty, fifty percent of our workload that was in the downtown corps is significantly reduced. When we see about seven thousand, eight thousand prisoners a year, that's pretty significant. So you're talking thirty-eight members, thirty-one members actually that are out there pounding the streets, you know, that's a lot of calls. So far this year, seventeen thousand calls for service, year-to-date. So far this year, seventeen thousand calls for service, year-to-date. Criminals' numbers, it's big.
Regarding to that, there was a question during inquiries in regards to the CSO and the RCMP. If you could speak to the five weeks when the legislation expired and we had to take the CSOs off the street because they didn't have the legislative powers, if you could speak to the impact that the force saw at that time.
I was updating calls. So I usually sit in an office and coordinate what's going on and I was literally out there picking up drunks off the street. That was my job with the rest of the crew because it was chaos. Like I said before, this is, Thompson is the mini Vegas further north. Everybody comes here to party, right? So you've liquor stores, you've got the shopping and you've got the bars. And unfortunately, we see all the repercussions of that in the downtown core. And this summer was by far the busiest summer I've seen in Thompson in terms of the folks from away that have come to Thompson and spent the entire summer here, some have not left. And when I asked them, because you always see new faces out the street, wait, who are you? What are you doing here? Where'd you come from? Well, they come from the communities and it's, this is the place to be. They came here to party. So and again, this year was a busy one, very busy summer for us. And that five weeks without the CSOs was rock and roll. Our members were tired and we were calling in members on overtime. It was, it was busy, very busy.
Other questions, counsel? Counsel Madichuk.
You say seventeen thousand year-to-date. Just making sure, you probably mean year-to-date as of December of last year for the year seventeen thousand? Year-to-date is only fifteen days in, so.
Oh, yeah, year-to-date.
Okay.
The date, sorry, I mean the fiscal year.
Not too soon.
Yeah, that'd be a lot of calls, wouldn't it? Be more than thirty-eight members.
Thank you again for the, for the report. And just for the general public, the Public Safety Meeting is every month and the statistics side of their work is reported by either Inspector Lewis or a representative of the RCMP. And then moving forward, as Counsel Valentino identified and I outlined, Inspector Lewis or a representative will be back in the next quarter to provide a similar report with an update in updated numbers. So thanks again for the report. Moving on, we next have the Recreation Community Services Committee report and I'll go to Director Andrew Hillby to provide that, or sorry, to the Chair, Dennis Foley. Andrew for support.
The Recreation Community Services Report from September first to December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Sitting on the committee, we've got the members, myself as Chair, Counselor Blake Ellis, Counselor Penny Byer, Mayor Dennis Fenske, City Manager Gary Sepatelli, Jim English, Andrew Hillaby and Lal Zelki. Community Representatives, we've got from the Boys and Girls Club Regina De Silva Gibbons, Ryan Land from the School District of Mystery Lake and Charlotte LaRocque from UCN. And we've got one citizen representative, which is Bruce Krenz. For program events, we had the National Child Day Christmas Tree Lighting and the Santa Parade, which was November eighteenth. We had received a Canada One Fifty grant for this year's event for a total of three thousand six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. And the attendance was estimated to be over a thousand people, which is quite well and I think even more than what we had from last year. We had the Royal Manitoba Theatre Centre Christmas Carol, November twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Estimated attendance was two hundred and thirty-four. The department also organized and assisted with the following events, the Health and Leisure Mart in September, the Remembrance Day ceremonies in November and obviously National Child Day in November. Plans are underway with Winterfest two thousand eighteen. Note the dates have been changed. The events will be held February second to the fourth of two thousand eighteen. In regards to McLean Park, the final payment for the stage structure has been made and the work has been completed. In regards to Norplex Pool, fall swim programs were well-attended and operated smoothly. Four new lifeguards have been hired. The Director of Recreation, Parks and Culture assumed responsibilities as the interim pool manager. In regards to the Winter Games, a couple of good things here. The bleachers were installed in the Gordon Beard Arena and the Bill Kamaski Gymnasium. A new wireless microphone system was installed in the Gordon Beard Arena, which I believe are all legacy items from, with the, in regards to hosting the games. The TRCC Fitness Area continues to be strong draw for residents and visitors. Repairs to one of the machines will take place in two thousand eighteen. Average attendance per day is looking at about seventy-five people. Ninety-five percent of them are actual members. The fees and fines for lockers will be lowered in two thousand eighteen. The park and recreational areas, the dog park has been checked and maintained weekly. New gates have been installed at two of the entrances. Forty loads of clay and topsoil have been leveled out at the Rotary Park. Outdoor rinks and warming shacks were open as of December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. We got a typo here by looks of it. The cemetery, the paving was completed in October. Recreation staff has been clearing snow every Friday. The Cemetery Advisory Subcommittee has been asked to attend RCS meeting. With safe operations, safety representatives received WHS training in September. Recreation Community Services Committee received delegations from the following groups. Jason Cook regarding possible options for honoring his father, who had made contributions to the city of Thompson. Delegation from Deputy Chief Oregon regarding the future implementation of fire smart zones around the city limits, which is in response to some of the, some of the things that we found out in, with the fires in Fort McMurray. The committee reviewed the following applications of waiving fees, including the Thompson Festival of the Arts, Terry Fox One, Walk a Mile in Our Shoes Event, Pride North Event, Royal Canadian Legion regarding Remembrance Day. Administration would like to thank the Recreation Community Services Committee for their continued guidance and support. And I'd just like to also note that our next meeting will be tomorrow at the Mary Fenske Boardroom in the TRCC at twelve o'clock.
Thank you, I'll go to Andrew for anything to support. Thank you, counsel, any questions on the report? Seeing none, we'll receive for information, thank you very much. Next up, we're going to correspondence. We have a letter from Colin Ferguson, President and CEO of Travel Manitoba in regards to the Northern Manitoba Tourism Strategy. It says, Dear Northern Partner, recently the government of Manitoba and Travel Manitoba announced the launch of the new Northern Manitoba Tourism Strategy, a five-year plan to increase northern tourism expenditures by thirty-five million dollars. The strategy aims to engage visitors in Canada's northern heartland. To achieve success, it is critical that the communities of the north embrace the priorities of the strategy. I'm writing you to seek your support in the implementation of this strategy and to work alongside us to grow tourism in northern Manitoba. The Northern Manitoba Tourism Strategy is based on five strategic priorities. Clarifying the roles of tourism stakeholders in the region, tourism marketing led by Travel Manitoba. This marketing will include Travel Manitoba North website, social media activity, blog, presented, printed inspiration guide and a digital marketing campaign. Tourism product and experience development, requirements for infrastructure enhancement and development, ensuring regulatory environments are conducive to tourism business success. Extensive consultation with northern tourism stakeholders laid the foundation of this strategy. A northern tourism advisory committee will work with Travel Manitoba and a local consultant, Alan McLaughlin, to implement the strategy and they provided Alan's contact information. Growing tourism in Manitoba North is not a task for one person or entity and therefore the support of you and your community is critical if we are to achieve our target to increase tourism revenues in Manitoba's North from a hundred and sixteen million to a hundred and fifteen million, a hundred and fifty-one million by two thousand twenty-two. The incredible natural assets of Manitoba's North, along with its rich indigenous culture and history, make it a cold entirely achievable, provided we align our efforts for maximum impact. I hope I can count on your support to assist Travel Manitoba in this critical and exciting initiative. Sincerely, Colin Ferguson, President and CEO of Travel Manitoba. I'll go for administration for any comments.
Yeah, just to indicate that obviously the consultant that's been hired by Travel Manitoba will be in Thompson, appearing before counsel on February the twelfth to give an update on, on the Tourism North Strategy and obviously being able to sort of answer any questions from counsel. I would also indicate that this letter be forwarded to the newly-formed Thompson Hotel Association and invite them to the February twelfth meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions on the correspondence? Seeing none, we'll receive for information, thank you. Next, we have a letter from Dave Dyson, Deputy Minister of Growth, Enterprise and Trade in regards to the Community Economic Development Fund in Thompson, two thousand twenty. This is to myself, your worship. Thank you for your letter dated November twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen. To the Honorable Blaine Peterson regarding the Communities Economic Development Fund and the Thompson, two thousand twenty. As Deputy Minister for the Department, I am pleased to respond on the minister's behalf. We understand that economic challenges facing your city, surrounding communities and region. Thompson, two thousand twenty has been leading the undertaking to mitigate the impacts of job losses in the mining sector and your work aligns well with the Look North report and action plan released in Thompson on October nineteenth. Changing course is not easy and Thompson, two thousand twenty is charting a new path towards economic growth and prosperity. The Look North Steering Committee has been established to lead the next phase of implementation. Thompson will be well-represented on the Steering Committee and the joint action groups for the six priority areas identified in the Look North report. One of the roles of the Steering Committee is to facilitate the development of projects, partnerships and strategic alliances to drive economic development. Thompson, two thousand twenty is a key stakeholder and a partner in this process and in changing the trajectory from one of the declining to one of growth. Our department will continue to work with Thompson, two thousand twenty to support your economic development efforts. We all recognize the need for economic diversification, development and partnerships to create long-term solutions that capitalize on the vast opportunities in Manitoba's North. We look forward to the ideas and projects that will the next phase of Look North will bring forward for increased investment and enterprise in Thompson and in Manitoba's North. Sincerely, Dave Dyson. He's the Deputy Minister for Growth, Enterprise, Trade. And I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for support.
Just to indicate is that this letter should be forwarded to Thompson, two thousand twenty.
Thank you, counsel, any questions? Counsel Valentino.
Committee, I believe, was announced yesterday. There was the press release and Deputy Mayor Smook is on it. And also Charlene Lefrenier from Thompson, I'm not sure if I'm missing anybody else.
The correct announcements, Counselor Ellis and then Mr. Sepatelli.
He mentions the Community Economic Development Fund, but he doesn't talk much about it here in this letter. But I think one of, one of the things that we were, we were lobbying for was to see that fund, that fund reopened. A lot of money comes out of, out of that fund in terms of giving loans to local businesses and, and you know, in terms of where we need to be and economic growth in this community. We need to see that fund reactivated and, and funds flow into Thompson and over the Manitoba. And so I encourage, I encourage the provincial government to do so.
Okay, in regards to Counsel Valentino's comments that Deputy Mayor Smook has been in name to the Steering Committee of Look North. Once we do get that formal recognition, we'll be bringing forth a resolution to counsel approving her involvement on Look North.
Thank you, Counsel buyer.
If I'm not mistaken, there's one other Thompsonite and that is Rita Lepine.
Questions or comments? Receive for information, thank you. Next, we have a letter from Karen Melunchuk, Executive Director of the Multi-Material Stewardship Manitoba in regards to the two thousand and eighteen municipal payments. This is attention to City Manager Gary Sepatelli. MMSM will provide, will be providing the two thousand and eighteen funding to municipalities on a quarterly basis in four equal payments. As in past years, the methodology for funding payments will be calculated each year based on the median three-year rolling average net costs for each municipal program by population group. The basis for the payment to each municipality was calculated using the number of tons and cost data in the most recently completed cost monitoring survey. Based on this methodology, the city of Thompson will receive a hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and sixty-five cents for two thousand and eighteen, paid in four equal payments in April, July, October and January. This amount represents four hundred and thirty-four point eight-nine tons of recycled material, including eligible OCC at a rate of two hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-seven cents per tonne, including northern allowance. Please note that the MMSM is facilitating a resolution between the Newspaper Group and the Government of Manitoba regarding newspaper recycling fees in the province. An amount of two thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and fifty-three cents has been withheld at this time. As soon as we have more information, we will communicate with, that with your municipality. MMSM requires all municipalities to submit a minimum quarterly April, July, October, January tonnage reports via the online reporting system. We encourage you to review the list of materials accepted under your residential recycling program to ensure you're capturing all acceptable material under our program. If you're planning to make changes to your residential recycling program regarding either the collection or the processing, we would like to remind you that as for the funding agreement between the city of Thompson and MMSM, you must consult the MMSM in advance to ensure these changes will improve the efficiency and effectiveness of your residential recycling program. MMSM is available to assist municipalities with technical support as part of the consultation process. This technical assistance includes reviewing existing programs in an effort to minimize costs, analysis of potential improvements, including capital purchases, contractual changes to collection and processing, and providing tools and assistance for promoting local recycling programs. MMSM looks forward to working with you in support of your residential recycling program. Should have any questions, feel free to contact Lori Gluck or herself at two zero four nine five three twenty-ten or toll-free one eight seven seven nine five two twenty-ten. We can also be reached via email when they've provided their email address. Regards Karen Melunchuk, Executive Director of Multi-Material Stewardship Manitoba. I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for support.
Yeah, just to indicate, I mean, obviously that this is an annual grant that we get from MMSM. It's a flow-through grant that is given to the Thompson Recycle Center for their recycling program that they undertake and we should forward this letter to them.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to the next letter of correspondence, which is a letter from Rochelle Squires, Minister of Sustainable Development in regards to potential developments of cottage lots. This letter is to myself, your worship. Thank you for your meeting on September twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. On December fourth, two thousand seventeen, Northeast Region Staff, the Department of Sustainable Development, met with the city of Thompson manager Gary Sepatelli and discussed the potential development of cottage lots inside Paint Lake Provincial Park and surrounding areas. It is my understanding from that meeting that a representative from City of Thompson's two thousand twenty committee, Harold Smith, is to meet with Darrell Hedman, Director of the Northeast Region, to discuss the next course of action and have Thompson, two thousand twenty present potential sites. An action item of this meeting will be that Thompson, two thousand twenty is required to meet with Valley and the shared potential cottage development opportunities with them and to confirm there is no mineral interest or desire to release any existing interests to advance potential cottage development planning on Crown Land. If you have any questions or would like to discuss the matter directly with Mr. Hedman, please contact him and he's got his contact information there. Thank you for, again, for your inquiry and your efforts to address cottage lot development around the city of Thompson. I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for support.
Yes, to sort of further outcomes of this letter is that Harold Smith of Thompson, two thousand twenty has had the opportunity to meet with Darrell Hedman of Sustainable Development and is in the process of having discussions with Valley in regards to the locations that they're considering. So based on this, we should forward this letter to Thompson, two thousand twenty as well.
Thank you. Just a clarification, I met with Minister Squires last, last evening and discussed this letter. And just to inform the general public, the discussion not only includes cottage lots, but also large lake, large acre lots outside city of Thompson limits, which is the LGD or on Crown Lands. So that discussion is all-encompassing, both for cottage lots and for large acre development. Counsel, any questions or comments? Counselor buyer.
I just want to thank you for raising the point of the large acre lots because I continue to get requests about where we're at with that, so thank you for raising that.
Next, we have resolutions. We have a resolution to approve the December check registers and we have the registers in the package. Resolution two zero one eight zero one seven moved by Counsel Foley, signed by Counsel buyer. Check register dated December two thousand seventeen, general accounts payable checks totaling two million, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-four dollars and nine cents. Payroll dated December eighth, two thousand seventeen, three hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and forty and fifty-six cents. Payroll dated December twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars and two cents for a subtotal of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and ten and fifty-eight cents and a grand total of two million, nine hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred and four and sixty-seven cents. The accounts contained in this check register have been reviewed by the members of the Finance and Administration Committee. I'll go to administration for support, Jen, anything, Dan? Nothing? Counsel, questions? Counselor Calata, then Counsel Madichuk.
Okay, I don't have any questions regarding the checks that are listed here. However, Volker Beckman under Spirit Way and under the other organizations he's been involved in had several major conferences this year. The city sponsored ten thousand dollars towards those conferences. One, I think, was a quarter to a million dollars of money was involved to put that on and we brought in people from all over the world. It was a huge success. I understand that twice he submitted financial reporting. The last time he indicated it was thirteen pages. What, what can we do to have that money go out to Volker?
Ms. Sepatelli.
The three events have occurred. When the proper information was received by the city, the checks were, were processed and they will show up on next month's check register.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Madichuk.
Okay, I have questions on half a dozen of them, starting with check number zero zero two five six three two. A check to design trail in the amount of forty-nine, fifty-eight and forty-five cents. I was just wondering what that was drawn up for?
Thank you.
Okay. Zero zero two five six eight one, eighty-four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents to MT-CML. I'm wondering, who is MT-CML? Okay, next is 0025733 to MAPS, $15,000. I'm wondering if that is flow-through, and if it is, where did the money originate?
Hydro cleanup program that's sponsored by Dimensional Hydro.
MAPS stands for Manor Part of the Solution.
Next, Canadian Mental Health Association in the amount of $31,783.0025710. I was wondering if that is also flow-through, because normally if it's in our budget, it's a nice round number, and that's not very round.
It filters through the community entity, so that was funding received from the federal government through the community entity funding.
Okay, thanks. Thompson Housing Authority, $1,575. I'm assuming that is the same.
Funding through the community entities.
One left. Well, one more, one more. Okay, 0025808, Thompson Water Factory, in the amount $252.68. Is our tap water not suitable for drinking? Why are we purchasing water? I'm wondering.
You can find out the circumstances of the check, but I can assure the general public that our water is drinkable and is best than I've ever tasted, but we can find out the details of that. Counsel Wong.
25626, check number, $2,268.40. Who is that for?
25... Counsel Wong, do you have...
Sorry?
Do you have the check number?
Yeah, 25626. It's Comair. And I believe the other check will be connected to these expenses, which is 25631 Delta Winnipeg, $5,49.81.
The Comair would be a flight, and the Delta would be a hotel cost. Other questions?
Check number 25640, NCI, $5,489.49. What kind of business do we have with NCI? Is it for the radio?
NCI, if I'm not correct, is the radio communications for NCI for Manitoba? I'm just...
Radio station.
We can find the details of the payment.
I was trying to speak the mouth as well to ask this question. This is funny. 25652, Waste Management, $865.74. Waste management is doing garbage. We have garbage truck. Why do we need them to take care of the business? That's the question.
Circumstances of that check, but I know that in some cases, if we have a vehicle or a piece of machinery down that we use for backup, but we can find the circumstances. Mr. Sepatelli.
Just a suggestion again in regards to the check registers, of which, once they're viewed at Finance and the Min Committee, I mean, obviously, the information goes out to all the council with a statement that if they have any questions, that they please let Administration know beforehand so that the proper information can be brought forth as counsel, as opposed to thinking that we're able to remember each and every specific item in regards to the checks that have been presented on a monthly basis and the details that they present. I mean, obviously, if council wants questions to specific checks, by all means, please ask Administration well in advance of council meeting, as opposed to us having to indicate that we'll have to get back to council.
Yep, other questions?
Well, I understand the management liked us to give them a question beforehand, but I'm not demanding the answer immediately, so I'm just asking the question. So I believe I have a right to do that. Okay, another check number, 25658, Arctic Radio. So are we having advertised with them regularly?
That's correct. Next question.
Okay. Check number 25668, $500. I'm wondering what that for?
Dennis Foley. Sorry? Dennis Foley. Counselor Foley.
Yeah, the recreation department gets a grant yearly that is used for artists at the museum. Each month when a artist is displayed their work, they get a check for $500. I've gone through the application process, and for the month of December, had my photography of northern Manitoba displayed in the museum in the art gallery.
Okay, thank you.
And 25762, $2,681.20. That's to Nova Scotia Bank Private, see how what that mean? Bank 005, I believe is one of a bank? Is that a credit card or?
I'll find that out for you. Other questions?
25765.
Two?
TD, TD Bank. So do we have another bank with the TD as well? Is that a credit card payment?
Any comment on Bank of Nova Scotia or Toronto Dominion Bank?
I believe that as part of our terms and conditions, people can transfer a portion of their vacation to RSP, so I believe that's what these two texts are in relation to.
Answers? Thank you. Other questions?
So because I thought we deal with CIBC, when I see other banks involved, that's why I'm asking that question. Hope you guys don't mind about it. 25768.
Name of the check?
Yeah, another Nova Scotia, so I believe you just explained.
Any other questions?
Two more, we'll be done.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry, just one more. 25788. Eight thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars and six cents. Like, what are we buying from there? That's a huge amount to me.
Employee recognition.
Sorry?
Employee recognition.
Oh, thank you. Thank you very much.
Questions?
Yeah, I just, for the public's information here, you're welcome to attend our Finance Committee meetings. We meet every other Monday, and once a month, we get the check registries at the Finance Committee meetings, and we go through it with staff. And council is welcome to attend, and they're welcome to ask the questions at that time, not when they choose to, because Shaw TV is here. And in regards to a few of the purchases, if you would attend some of the events, like the employee recognition, people would know why the checks are written for those events.
Mr. Sepatelli.
Yeah, just to indicate, I mean, obviously, with the amount of questions about the checks from both Counsel Wong and Counsel Matichuk, if they could please email me the individual check numbers, and we'll get the information for all the council.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll move on. Oh, no, sorry. Call the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie Janowski, thank you. We'll now go on to the resolution authorizing Administration to enter into contribution agreements with controlled entities, and we have a memo from the CFO. Resolution 2018018, moved by Counsel Ellis, second by Counsel Byer. We resolve the council authorized Administration to enter into the contribution agreements with the following controlled entities for 2018: the Thompson Zoological Society, the Thompson Recycling Center, the Thompson Public Library, and the Thompson Housing Agency. We'll go to Jenny as the CFO. Anything to add?
This is which outlines the terms of the funding that we provide to the four controlled entities listed there. So just determines the requirements of their funding, so the reporting structure and stuff like that.
Counsel Wong.
Contribution agreement, where's the horse? I see the cart. Tomorrow, we're going to have a budget meeting. Why are we doing this today? What are we approving in principle again for a resolution, which is we still haven't complete our control entity meeting yet? So if we go to approve this, I would like to ask, what is the amount we are giving individually? Because it's going to be a public document.
Counsel Wong, just for clarification. Just reminder to all of councilors, that the information that we're coming through this evening by this resolution is a standard resolution that we pass each year. As a former member of the Finance Committee and part of this council, who's been part of the budget deliberations, these have already been discussed with council in regards to the process. This was the agreed process that's been followed for the last three years and will be continued to follow in 2018. The contribution agreements, again, are brought forward as per direction from our CFO. The final amounts are not determined until the budget is finalized, but what is determined is similar to our capital and our operations quarterly sort of forecast to get us through the beginning of the year before the budget's actually passed. We've done this in the past and will continue because the controlled entities have to operate. So this is the agreement that's put in place so that we can forward funds, a portion of their funds, to them so they can continue to operate. If there's any change in the yearly allocation, that change will be reflected in the last payment to the entity, and this was discussed at the last budget meeting that you were present at, and this was the direction provided to council, by council to bring it forward. Counselor, or sorry, I'll go to Chief Financial Officer and then Gary. Any comment on that? Mr. Sepatelli.
And obviously, that the wording that's in the contribution agreement, which has been consistent over this term and the previous term of council, really identifies as allocated in the appropriate budget year.
Counsel Wong.
Well, for the last years, I learned from this, because we don't even have the finalized number yet. How can we agree right now? What is the amount we contribute to them individually? So yes, the past three years, we did this practice, but to me, it doesn't mean the practice always right. That's why I like to ask, what is the amount we're giving to individually the four control entity? So we all can understand, what are we paying right now to individually?
Once again, we'll clarify a lack of understanding in the budget process. The numbers that have been asked for, we've received applications from each entity for funding for 2018. Council has reviewed that, has not made any decisions on the final amount. As discussed at budget meetings, that you're quite well aware of, the illegal agreements need to come forward with no dollar amount, because no dollar amount has been determined at the outset. But these entities still have to operate. We know that we will be giving them something. We know that we're in budget deliberations right now. We don't have a final number because council hasn't approved the budget. Until such time, the final number can't be made. So I'm not sure what you're asking for, other than this is the process we followed in the past three years. This is the following that this council agreed to follow again for this year, so I'm not understanding the question of clarification. Counsel, or Mr. Sepatelli.
Nothing further to add.
Counsel Calata.
I'm almost certain that we've never approved the contribution agreements until we've heard the presentation from all the controlled entities. Tomorrow evening, we have the presentation from the Thompson Library. We can have a special meeting in 48 hours, so I don't think it was necessary to have it on this agenda. If we have to clear it to have payments go out to the entities, and I can certainly understand that, but two days difference, I don't understand that, because we haven't heard the presentation from the library yet.
Mr. Sepatelli for clarification.
Resolution, which is an annual resolution that comes forth to council at the start of the year, and it's well in advance of council making final determinations for these four controlled entities, as were required, they're controlled entities as per the PSAB rules, of which council should be aware of. So this is giving Administration the authority to prepare the agreements, the annual agreements that have been in place for a number of years, and then council, during your budget deliberations, will determine the actual value that will be identified to each one of these four entities. Once that is done, then the mayor contacts the individual organizations with the amounts that they're getting for the 2018 year. This resolution will give Administration the ability to actually prepare the documents to put into place.
Other questions? Counsel Calata.
Yes, I'm well aware of the process. The Thompson Library is owned by the City of Thompson. There's been constant problems there with the heating system, with different building concerns, and I just think that it's important that we listen to their presentation before we pass a resolution, so.
To clarify Counsel Calata's comments, the point she made has nothing to do with the resolution before us. Counsel Byer.
Yeah, all I wanted to say, perhaps in slightly different words, is that this resolution will actually be a time saver, so that we can get, once we agree on the details of the agreements, the paperwork will be done and ready to fire off. If we delay this for a 48-hour period or the next meeting or whatever, then it delays the process to get the money into the entity's hands. And they are all on a fairly thin budget line, or pretty thin string, rather, and if they don't get those first payments in a timely fashion, that'll affect their ability to operate, and I don't think we want to be losing the services that these entities provide.
Counsel Valentino, did you have a comment? Thank you. With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve entering into the project management contract with Pro forma Engineering Limited, and a memo from the Director of Development Services. Resolution 2018019, moved by Counsel Byer, second by Counsel Foley. Whereas the City of Thompson has received a proposal from Pro forma Engineering Limited to provide on-demand engineering and project management services to the City of Thompson, and whereas the proposal includes services up to 16 hours per week for a total of $7,680 per month plus applicable taxes. We resolve the council approve entering into the contract with Pro forma Engineering Limited to provide engineering and project management services for 2018 capital and operating requirements at 16 hours per week for a total of $7,680 per month plus applicable taxes from January 1, 2018, to December 31, 2020. We'll go to Administration, Director of Development. Anything to add?
This was discussed at the public's construction committee, and it was really in place to enhance engineering services available to the City of Thompson.
Thank you, and I clarify, this is past practice. We've done this in the past.
Yes, it's been done the past three, four years.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Counsel Byer.
I believe the pro forma support was a year-by-year contract, so what's new this time is that we're entering into a three-year contract, which I think is excellent. It helps us budget and know our costs moving forward, so thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. I just want a clarification about this memo. I was at the meeting as well. I did ask this question, and the answer is saying, correct me if I'm wrong, when we need them, this only require up to 16-hour and the price, whatever it is, but in the memo, it said the total of $7,680 per month. Does that mean we are paying monthly to them now? Just I want, I just want a clarification.
Basically, what I did is I multiplied, but their weekly rate was just to make...
Sorry, Anthony?
So I checked their weekly rate, and I multiplied just to give a monthly amount?
If you use them.
If you're to use it for an entire month.
Okay, I just want a clarification. Make sure it's not...
That limit.
Okay, I have no problem. I just wanted to add that when we negotiated this with them, the rates are frozen for three years, so they will be increased.
Thank you. Mr. Sepatelli, anything to add?
No, Director of Development Services.
Thank you, okay. I'll call for the question. All those in favor? Carrie Janowski, thank you. Now, we have a resolution to approve the special event status for Winterfest 2018, and a memo from the Licensing Inspector. Resolution 2018020, moved by Counsel Ellis, second by Counsel Byer. Whereas the Winterfest Committee has applied for special event status for Winterfest 2018, now therefore be resolved, and Winterfest 2018 be declared a special event in Thompson from February 2 to February 4, 2018. I'll go to staff for support. Mr. Sepatelli.
A housekeeping resolution that is consistent with what was passed last year for the Winterfest Committee applying for a special event status, and no different than the resolution that was taken to council in regards to the Manitoba Games in a previous meeting.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? See, oh, Counsel Valentino.
I'd like to make a comment that the last couple of years, we've had this on the same weekend. It was always the end of February, and I'm hoping we can look at continuing the continuity in the future again, since this is a Manitoba Games year. But I also want the public to remember that we can't just... want the public to remember that we can't just focus on the Manitoba Games, we still have Winterfest, and we still have activities going on down at the TRCC, so please take part in these, and they're looking for volunteers, and I think they have a meeting next week, or this Wednesday.
Any other questions or comments? Councillor Byer.
Just a comment, I had been under the impression, because it was told to me that there would be no maze for the kids to play in this year, but thanks to our Recreation Director, it's been confirmed, there will be a snow maze again this year, and that's been a very popular item the last couple of years, so, thank you.
Just to clarify, there is a new location, there is a maze, but it's in a new location. It was basically in the excess overflow parking lot outside of UCN Drive, it will now be brought inside to the soccer field, behind the GB and the CA and the TRCC, but there will be a maze. With that, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve FCM membership fees and the FCM membership dues. Resolution 2018021, moved by councillor Foley, seconded by councillor Byer. Be it resolved, the council approve the payment of membership fees for April 1, 2018, March 31st, 2019, to the Federation Canadian Municipalities, FCM, for the amount not to exceed $2,838.19. I'll go to Mr. Sepatelli for support.
Yeah, so this is an annual invoice that we get from the Federation Canadian Municipalities, and it's based on population.
Questions from council? Councillor Clodagh, and then councillor Wong.
Yes, for the public that doesn't know, the AMM, the Association of Manitoba Municipalities, is our lobbying body for provincial grants for infrastructure and so on, and the FCM is the Federation of Canadian Municipalities, and they lobby, they lobby the federal government for grants on behalf of municipalities. So I, I want to indicate that I strongly support this, because they, they are very successful, and without them, our taxes would be much higher, so, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Wong. Thank you, just the, one of the option there for legal defence fund, what that fund will help us? I think, I mean, it's not a big amount, but when, in what situation we need that, to me, it's like we buy insurance for defend, insured, not insurance, the legal defence, which is like when we have legal issues, FCM will help, is not that, or what else is that for?
Fees are for the FCM to fight a legal issue on our behalf of municipalities across Canada. So it's not as specific to the City of Thompson, it's specific to a national issue that FCM may have to take to the courts, and they are, as councillor Clodagh outlined, our national lobby group, and so as municipalities across Canada, we contribute to that defence fund, so that the FCM can assist in their own legal costs in defending issues that pertain to municipalities across Canada. Other questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. Next, we have a resolution to approve attendance at the AMM Board of Directors meeting. Resolution 2018022, moved by councillor Ellis, seconded by councillor Foley. Be it resolved, the council approve the attendance of councillor Byer at the AMM Board of Directors meeting in Portage Le Prairie on January 25th, 2018, and be further resolved, the attendance at this meeting be borne under the terms and conditions of bylaw 1897-2013. Go to Mr. Sepatelli for support.
So this is at no cost to the City of Thompson, as the councillor Byer is a, is an AMM Board of Director, and costs are paid by AMM, this is strictly for insurance purposes.
Thank you. With that, council, any questions? Seeing none, call for the question, all those in favor? Carrie Denas, thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report, and this is for January 3rd to April 15th. I want to start the report just by clarifying a couple of articles that have been reported in the local Thompson citizen, one in regards to the Grant in Lew, and the second in regards to the PUB, Public Utilities Board release. First, in regards to the Grant in Lew, the citizen reported within the framework of that Grant in Lew that was passed by, the resolution that was passed by the City of Thompson, the amounts of $4.8 million in the first year, $3 million in the second year, with an escalator of $1.2 million, and $3 millions in the second, or third and fourth year. The clarification is that in, within the article, they further defined that contribution on a yearly basis, based on the past descriptions, percentage-wise and money-wise, portions that would go to the City of Thompson, the school district, and the local government district. I just want to affirm to the general public that the amounts, the 4.8 million, the 3 million, 3 million, 3 million, there are no, there is no wording within the Grant in Lew and the 56 agreement that dictates what the amounts shall be. The City of Thompson, through our own deliberations, shall determine what the amounts of 48, 3.0, 3.30, 3.0 will be allocated to the school district, the Ministry Lake, and the LGD. It could be status quo, it could be zero, it could be anything in between, but that, that is the call of council, to determine what the allocation will be. So that's the first clarification. The second clarification is in regards to the article online, in regards to the Public Utilities Board announcement, in regards to the transfer of the water treatment plant to the City of Thompson. There is, there are a couple of errors within the announcement. One in regards to the, the payment for the cost of operating the pump house, in regards to the percentage, the city will be charged, basically, there's an amount of raw water that comes from the Vertwood River to the, to the water treatment plant. The amount of water that is then used to process and make potable water for city distribution is about 6.52% of the total volume, and we will be charged 25% of that cost for the operation of the, of the, of the pump house. In regards to the, the transfer itself, the effect, the transfer is effective January 1st, 2018? Correct, Mr. Sepatelli? Or 2018?
January 1st.
2018. And so just wanted to clarify that in regards to the statements that have been made. And the, the last part of the, the announcement from the PUB, is that they made a statement that the hearing was cancelled. That was only the hearing for the ownership transfer, not for the rate review that's, that will be, there is a hearing for the rate review on January 23rd, that will be held by the Public Utilities Board, and there are objectors, and there will be the City of Thompson speaking in defense of the, of the rates application, but just to assure the general public, the hearing has not been cancelled. The one that related to the ownership, there were no objectors, objectors to that application, and so for, therefore, there's a paper exercise to complete by the Public Utility Board to ensure that that happens. So, once again, the public hearing for the rate review is still on January 23rd here in Thompson. Moving on, I met with, as I mentioned, I met with Minister Pedersen in Winnipeg on January 23rd, the day after the Grant in Lew resolution was passed by the city council to discuss strategy moving forward to access the mining reserve fund that's in place for situations that, that we are experiencing as the City of Thompson. Attended the provincial municipal justice advisory committee meeting in Winnipeg on January, January 5th. A budget meeting was held on January 9th, along with council members, administration in Thompson 2020, we met with Director of Mines Chris Beaumont-Smith on January 10th. Along with the administration, we met with Thompson Urban Aboriginal Strategy on January 11th. Along with council members and city manager Gary Sepatelli, we met with MLA Kelly Bindle on January 12th to discuss the Grant in Lew. Met with Minister Squires in Thompson last evening, and we discussed, I discussed with her the plastic ban proposal that's, or initiative that the province of Manitoba is considering. She wanted to hear our perspective, because we are one of the few communities in Manitoba that have instituted the plastic ban, ban, and so that they wanted to, to talk about the experiences from that. We talked about the one-stop shop at the, the landfill in regards to establishing that moving forward, rather than just a seasonal one, and we also talked about the Grant in Lew, and the discussions that we've had with Minister Pedersen, and the situation that we find ourselves in, and moving forward with those discussions. Also, the bi-weekly Thompson 2020 conference calls continued, the monthly water treatment plant meetings continued, various committee meetings were held, development review, public works and infrastructure, finance and administration, legislative and intergovernmental affairs, and public safety, and those for, that are tech savvy, we have an app, thompson.ca app that's available in the App Store under the City of Thompson, or you can download it from the thompson.ca website, so go to either spots if you want to download the City of Thompson app. There are no proclamations at this time, and I would go to councillors to report on any activities on behalf of the City of Thompson from January 3rd to the 15th. Anybody? Councillor Byer.
And I was there, I was there on behalf of the City of Thompson. Three years ago, there was a homelessness strategy meeting workshop, and I had attended there as, as a city councillor, and while I was there, I was asked if I would ever visit with homeless people, and I said, if I'm invited, I will come. So last Monday, a week ago, I received a phone call, would I be willing to visit the people at Project Northern Doorway, and I said, of course. So I went on Friday, and I just want people to know, the experience was very interesting and humbling. People are working hard against all kinds of odds to better themselves. First of all, I want to point out, they're very grateful for any kindness that is shown them, and apparently, there's somebody in a red vehicle who drives around Thompson, and will hand out food and soup and that sort of thing, and whoever that person is on behalf of the people at Project Northern Doorway, and those who are homeless, thank you very much. But, you know, they're trying to improve their situation, they do things like odd jobs, two of them went and bought themselves shovels, and they'll go shovel driveways and sidewalks and anything else. They are limited as to how much they can make in a day, because if they make too much, then the supports they get from the province are, can be pulled from them, so that makes it very difficult for them to improve themselves. Literacy is a problem, and, and another thing, as you all know, anytime you go to apply for a job, or, or apply for an apartment, or housing, or anything like that, you need photo ID. And with some people, the only photo ID they have would be a treaty card, and if it's expired, they cannot use their expired treaty card as proof of identification to get their new treaty card. So they are facing obstacles and challenges that, that we don't, and I think that it's very courageous of them to continue to try to improve their, their situation, and to try and become self-sufficient, and with varying degrees of success, obviously, it's not, you know, not everybody is able just to leap forward, but they're, they're trying hard, and so my hat's off to the residents at Project Northern Doorway for, for their efforts.
Thank you, anybody else? Seeing none, call for adjournment motion. Councillor Valentino, councillor Ellis, all in favor? Carrie, we stand adjourned, thank you. Have a good evening.